Great, thank you. And thank you all for joining. We're returning from executive session. Apologies that we're running just a couple of minutes late. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public cannot physically access the school committee meeting. That's here at the high school library, but you can watch it live on channel 14 through the Zoom link provided on the agenda. And you can always watch it on our YouTube channel. We're going to start with the pledge. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have anyone attending that is going to be making an audio or video recording of tonight's meeting? Please notify me by raising your hand so I can notify the public as required by the open meeting law. I see one hand up. Karen Don. Yeah, I don't know that name. Can we promote Karen Don? To find out where she is reporting from? Can you hear us? Karen, can you hear us? I think you're on mute.
You can unmute yourself.
Can you unmute yourself and let us know where you're making an audio or video recording for? Okay, I'm gonna guess that maybe it's up by mistake. And is there anyone else making an audio or video recording of today's meeting? Okay. Thank you. And public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on our meeting agenda. Comments are limited to two minutes in length. And due to the open meeting law, the committee cannot take action on public comment. For items that are on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. And additional comments and feedback can always be submitted to our email address at schoolcommittee.falmouth.k12.us. But before we start with public comment, I have a brief statement that I would like to read. We've seen the news articles and the social media posts, and we've all passed many of our wonderful educators on our way in today as they showed their support for their union and its leadership. Despite what I've read in the news articles and emails that have been forwarded to me, I want to assure you that the school district and the school committee have not engaged in actions to inhibit the FEA rights to represent its members. I've been on this committee for quite a few years now. I'm part of negotiations for many of those years. And I can state unequivocally that this is a district that values our staff and values all of our unions and the role that they play in representing their membership. And when the union and the districts work together, it is a fabulous thing, a really important relationship that serves students, staff, and the district well. I've had many meetings and conversations with Dr. Dorr, and I can assure you that she shares this view and does everything in her power to create a student-focused and staff-friendly workplace because, as she always says, because it's the right thing to do. It's been especially challenging this year during the pandemic, but Dr. Dorr and her team have worked tirelessly to come up with creative solutions to meet the needs of our staff and our students. And as you know, we can't discuss individual personnel matters during school committee meetings in open session or during public comment. But the school committee is always open to hearing any issues our employees or our community members or families feel are not being otherwise addressed. Thank you. Do we have anyone who has public comment for tonight? Please raise your hand, and we'll promote you. Okay. I don't see any hands raised for public comment. So we'll move quickly to the T-Ticket Roof Ballot Question item so that we can get Patrick through our meeting and onto the next one with the Finance Committee because I know he's double-voted for tonight. So as you may have already seen in materials in the newspaper, there is a ballot question on the May 18 ballot to approve a proposition, two and a half override, to fund the repair, replacement of the T-Ticket School Roof. And we just wanted to make sure that, you know, we did, we did have an update from Patrick about this at our joint Select Board meeting, but it was an unusual meeting. And we wanted to make sure that anyone who attends our regular meetings has the opportunity to be well-informed before they have to vote on that. So Patrick is gonna do it again. Sorry, Patrick.
That's all right.
With additional information about the process and where we're at.
Sure. So, so thanks for letting me talk about the T-Ticket Roof Project. So I'm gonna go through the process to date that we've been on and then what, what we believe the process is going forward. The Massachusetts School Building Authority has a process called the Accelerated Repair Program that school districts are, are, can apply to. That application is available for a statement of interest is available in typically mid-January of every year. So a year ago, so January 2020, we took that. We submitted that with lots of, lots of folks signing off from the school committee and the, and the town manager and the, in the Board of, the Select Board side that we submitted this, this statement of interest. I checked back on February 13th. We all know what happened a month later. The MSBA did not have the ability to act on, on those statements of interest. And it's a very competitive process. They can't fund every project. And they followed up with us in October of 2020 by telling us that they wanted to come visit with a couple of drones to image the T-Ticket Roof. They did that. It was kind of cool. It was pretty interesting. They have very good drones that they used in relation to, with the Department of Transportation. And then they went away. In December of 2020, they notified us that they're, they were inviting us to, to get involved in the next phase of the project. And that's the design and schematic phase of the project. In order to do that, the town has to commit to covering the cost of that schematic design phase of the project. And that's what the town voted on at the January town meeting. They identified $100,000 to cover the design phase of the project. In order to continue moving forward in the process, we had to, one, confirm that vote happened. Two, we had to submit a lot more paperwork about the overall maintenance and, and capital investment in the schools' buildings over the years. And then in, and, and that had to be done by early March. In mid-April, so just a few weeks ago, they, they assigned us an OPM, Owner's Project Manager, and a designer architect for this phase of the project. And that's part of the Accelerated Repair Program where the MSBA assigns pre-qualified OPMs and architects for, for these projects. We have signed the agreement with the Owner's Project Manager. The architect, over April vacation, did, was able to come and take a look at the building and just sort of do a walk around. The, we did receive last week, received the architect or designer's contract. I was able to drop that off at the town attorneys. That needs to be reviewed and then signed off by the town manager and the superintendent and gotten back to the, the OPM architect and then submit it to the MSBA. And then the process, this design phase of the process begins to work. And the, and the timeline for that is that they need to submit estimates and designs and, you know, the, the next phase of this to the MSBA in time for their August board meeting. So by the end of July. And if, if that happens and the MSBA agrees upon that, then all, this whole process is to identify whether the MSBA will fund for Falmouth a third of the project. So it's a long process to get about a third of the project. Thirty-four percent is probably a closer number of the project funded by the MSBA. Because that timeline doesn't necessarily, it's not sort of the normal timeline anymore because of the pandemic season. The town manager who's been involved in these calls, I'm sorry, the town CFO who's been involved in these calls multiple times over the past year to talk about sort of timing of this. We were able to identify a process where there would be a language submitted on the May ballot that just gives the town voters a general idea of what the project would entail and how it would be funded, not exactly what would be funded in terms of the price tag. Because we don't truly have that estimate yet. And then next November, the town meeting would vote on the actual amount because we would have all those details submitted to the MSBA and all the boxes checked and the i's dotted and the t's crossed. The goal here is to get a bid package out next fall, sort of after the roofing season this summer. Get a bid package out next fall so that we'd be kind of at the head of the line for a project that would be during the summer of 2022. And the timing of your, of any kind of bid process, especially a big one like this, is really important. You can't rush it. What you're looking for is competitive bids from roofers who are looking for their next year's project. So we would be in good shape for, for next fall. I know the, the magic question that everybody wants is, so how much does this cost?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So the architect, we, we kind of pressured the architect, who has, architect designer who hasn't even gotten a signed contract, to come down, take a look, and, and just give us some rough estimates. And they, and they did use other projects to give us some estimates. And they, they said, you know, with, with soft costs, meaning architect, OPM, contingency funds, they were estimating a project of about $3 million. But they said, next fall is a long way off. And, you know, the hope is that the cost of, of construction materials is going to start to moderate by next fall and then next summer. And the labor cost that we would be going up against, because we were out, out to bid early, would be, would be competitive. But they also need to do an inspection of what's, what this roof looks like and what's under it and all those kind of things. So there's, there's always hidden parts of projects. So that's, that's the best information I have now. But the designer architect was not, did not want to, did not want to hold on to that number too tightly because a lot can change in this, in this environment.
And so with that, just to clarify that three, you know, just in a random ballpark kind of way, that 3 million is the total cost. And then if it's an MSBA project, we would take a third of that off in terms of how much the town is obligated, right?
Correct, correct.
Just making sure we have the.
Yeah. And I, and we received that information just last week. And I did forward that to the town CFO also last week when I received that. So that's, that's the number that people are looking for. I'm sure somebody's going to want to put that in the newspaper. I'm just trying to protect our designer architect and say they, they were using estimates of roofing projects ranging from $30 a square foot to, I think, $80 a square foot that had recently been done. So a, a project in the range of $50 a square foot was kind of where they, they threw the dart, so.
That's fair. And I don't think we need to hold anybody to it, but it is nice for the public to have a sense of order of magnitude. You know, are we talking?
Sure.
A $500,000 project or a $5 million project? And I think that this at least, at least gives some scale so people can vote on it. And I would presume that the reason that we're voting now is because we, it has to have town support before it goes to bid? Is that the, is that the overall?
Yeah, it's, 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 the, the language that I was, I received from the town is really, how are we going to pay for it? As opposed to how much of this? And that's really what they needed that vote for. Then that needs to be submitted to the MSBA also.
Okay, that makes sense.
Patrick, I so much appreciate the timeline of this. It really, it gives perspective to how much work this is with the MSBA. I have a question for you around this process. So we have gotten to this, what appears to be the final process of this being awarded money. Do you know by chance what percentage of prize is awarded?
Thanks for asking, so we can brag a little bit, right? It's, these processes, these are small, these are very competitive. And getting this far in the process is actually a big deal for a school district. We've, we've done this once before with the Lawrence Project. We don't submit randomly and for everything, but this is very competitive, especially during this, this timeline. So I, I don't have an exact percentage, but I think it's like, you know, 30% are invited into this level of the process, so.
And then from there, do you know how many get awarded?
We're in good shape. That, that's true. That we, they usually, it would have to be an unusual situation, like the town doesn't follow up or, or the architect, you know, OPMs aren't doing something right. There would have to be a problem for them to sort of stop the process entirely. So we're, if, if we're able to continue to follow this process all the way through next November, the MSBA will, will be funding this project.
Great, thank you. Thank you for asking that. Any other questions? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Nope. I, I will be back if people think of questions.
Okay, that's fair.
I'm jumping to the, the FinCom meeting right now.
Which we would never be able to do this without Zoom.
That's exactly.
It is certainly a blessing and a personal at the same time.
Yeah, the magic of Zoom.
Well, tell all of our FinCom people.
Okay.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
So as you've noticed, some of the things are a little out of order. Usually Lori starts first, but we needed to get Patrick over to FinCom at seven o'clock so he could present the same thing to them. And we also didn't want to have our friends over from Wampanoag Tribe be waiting an enormous amount of time before we got to them. So that's why they're next up. Are they already promoted or are they here?
They're here.
Brian, can we? And do you know who to promote?
Yes.
Okay. How many people are we expecting? Okay, great.
We're all here.
One, two, three. You're all here? Great.
Yes, we are.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us. We really appreciate you taking the time to talk to us a little bit about this. So I, I'm guessing that you were already filled in, that, you know, the, the committee had started talking about land acknowledgements. We had a wonderful presentation. I can't even remember when because all the days blur together now. But really talking about building greater relationships with the tribe and the school district. And Leah had actually asked that we start talking about a land acknowledgement. And we realized we have a lot that we need to learn about that. So thanks for coming and, and sharing this information with us today. We all have the packet in front of us. Just so you know, we can follow along. So I will turn it over to you. Lori, did you have anything you need to add?
No, I just appreciated the, I appreciate that you guys are here and, and welcome to discussion. This is very exciting.
Well, we're missing Jerry, and he starts our PowerPoint.
Oh, so.
That's why, I mean, I thought I saw Jerry.
Oh, yeah. Hold on, let's. Jerry with a J?
Yeah, Jay Lassos.
We don't have a last name, but we'll promote him and we'll hope he's the right Jerry.
I think he had a hard time finding the, the link embedded in the packet.
Yeah, sometimes it's hard to copy them and it sometimes doesn't cooperate. Okay.
There I am, hello.
Oh, great, there you are. Great. Sorry, we missed you on the first pass of letting everyone into the meeting. So thank you for joining us. And I hear you're gonna, you're gonna share your screen and, and share some slides with us.
Yes, we are. And we want to thank you for this opportunity. And we're, we're excited to see you all again. And hopefully, we can let you know what we hope will happen as far as the land acknowledgement. And so with that, is the PowerPoint accessible?
I hope so. Does he have permission to share his screen? All right. Our technician, our master tech is working on it. Okay, go for it. Hopefully it'll work.
Great. Great.
Maybe he wants you to share it.
There are four representatives.
All right.
Winnie Nakon, Natasuis Natana Hixcreneearka, Nui Kontam, Apniat Uet Mukiska, Katapetontamauanmu, Wicom Minat, Wachiu Achui, Song Pausui Ka, Wani Gappus Wachiu Falmuh Katnatan Taiin Anuak. Hello, everyone. My name's Natana Hixcreneear. And we just want to thank you for having us. We think this is a really important opportunity for us to collaborate between the Falmouth Schools and, and the tribe. And we're just really, we're glad to be here to, to help you all with this, with this project. I'm gonna turn it over to Kitty.
Winnie Nakon, Natana Katapetash. Well, I'll start with myself. My name is Kitty Hendricks Miller. And I am the Indigenous Education Coordinator for the Mashpee Education Department in the, for the tribe. And being the staff member here, I thought I would introduce the, all of our team. And we're very lucky to have a team with these members. Natana, of course, she introduced us with, with the language. Natana is a Mashpee Wampanoag. And she comes from the Wampanoag Language Reclamation Project and was instrumental in the effort to bring the language back, which had been lost to us for so many years. But it was, it was always there, and now it's back. So besides being a Brown Postdoctoral Fellow in American, in Native American Indigenous Studies, she's a mother of five. She's my neighbor. She's a great person to have on your team. So we're blessed to have you, Natana. Linda Coombs. Excuse me. Linda Coombs, my longtime mentor. And we've worked many years together at Plymouth Plantation. She headed that Indigenous program there for so many years and built it to be one of the leading places of the world to come and learn about Wampanoag people. So we're lucky to have her on our team. And she's also an independent scholar and consultant. And we are, we are consulting on many projects right now. And she's the, holds a lot of our history. So again, Linda Coombs is an Aquina Wampanoag from Aquina on Mathis Vineyard. And Jerry, Jerry found us. He's like, where's all the Indians? Jerry Lassos. He's from the Tonga Tribe in the Los Angeles area in California. And he just comes with a wealth of experience in Native education and working all across the board in all fields, in American Indian Resource Specialists. And he's a contractor with the tribe. So it's just one of many things that Jerry brings to us. And we're very lucky, like I said. I think our team is strong. We've had an overwhelming, you know, requests for land acknowledgements. So we figure this is kind of our first working as a team to address this. So I'm, I'm thinking that it's going to be a really good tool to, you know, lead people on the right path. So thank you. Thank you for having us, Falmouth.
Thank you for coming.
If we could move to the next slide? That would be great. And let me greet you in a traditional way, which is to show you that my hands are open and that my eyes see your eyes. And we would greet you with the term Nacho Chan. And I'm going to talk about the purpose of a land acknowledgement. And you can see that it's a traditional custom that goes way back, many centuries, between Native nations and communities. And the purpose of a land acknowledgement is to recognize, respect, and affirm the ongoing relationship between Indigenous people, the land, and in this case, Falmouth Schools. And we're honored to be able to present this information to you. Land acknowledgements also raise awareness about the Indigenous history's perspective and experiences of the, of the people. And I think it's an important piece to understand that the Mashpee Wampanoag are still here and they are even within your classrooms. So we are honored that the land acknowledgement will be a part of the process as we move forward. And the next slide.
So here we have a couple of maps, which obviously you can recognize where we're, what we're looking at here. We've got on the left, Southern New England. And on the right, just mostly the eastern part of Massachusetts. And if we look at the map on the right, this is Wampanoag territory. This is our traditional homeland. On the left, you can see what our, our neighboring tribes are as well. And the map on the left is actually a linguistic map. And this is how we have been able to determine pretty, with, you know, a pretty good amount of confidence, what exactly our homeland was, even though now we only have a few remaining, remaining tribes, right? So we have Mashpee, where Kitty and I are from, Aquina, where Linda is from. And there's also two other communities of, current communities of Wampanoag people, which is Heron Pond and Assonit. But historically, there were approximately 70 different Wampanoag tribes. And they were spread out all throughout this whole area of, of Eastern Massachusetts, all the way up to the Merrimack River, to Nera Gansett Bay, and then all of Cape Cod and the islands. And so while Falmouth may not be, you know, part of Mashpee, it may not be part of Aquina, there are still, this is still ancestral land of the Wampanoag Nation. So when you think about some of the, the smaller places within the town of Falmouth, right? Sippawisset or T-Ticket or Wacoit or some of these other places that, that, you know, we still live and, and, you know, go swimming and, and do business in all of these places, these are all, they're Wampanoag words, of course. And these are all Wampanoag villages. So we just want to make sure that, that when we're thinking about the land that, that Falmouth Schools and, you know, Falmouth residents are on, it's not Mashpee Wampanoag land, it's not Aquina Wampanoag land, it's the land of the people who were there. And while we are all Wampanoag and we are all part of the Wampanoag Nation, there are, there are people that are, are no longer visible, right? In this area that are no, that no longer have a voice because this, these villages of Falmouth no longer exist. But we do want to recognize that this is Wampanoag land, right? Where we are all, I'm assuming, if everyone is, is at home right now, that we are all on Wampanoag land at this moment. We all work on Wampanoag land. We learn there. And this is where we, we live our lives. Go ahead and move to the next one.
Thank you. You have a, a handout that was given to each of you. And it includes the elements to consider. it includes the elements to consider in the drafting of a land acknowledgement for Falmouth Schools. Is Linda?
I'm here.
Oh, good. Linda Coombs.
Winnie Nakon, Natasha Wees, Linda Coombs, New Tomas Aquinahanut, Natay Masipiat. Good evening, everyone. My name is Linda Coombs. I'm from the Aquina Tribe on Martha's Vineyard, but I live in Mashpee where I have for many years. So long that many times people get confused and think I'm a Mashpee Wampanoag, so.
I thought for most of my life.
Me too.
Yeah, I, I wonder if, you know, they say if you live with somebody long enough, you start to look like them, so.
Well, that would explain your good looks.
I guess so. So the first point here, I think Natanaa did a, you know, a great job of, you know, pointing out that, that Falmouth is not Mashpee, that there, you know, Mashpee was one of the 69 or 70 villages, villages of the original Wampanoag Nation, but there were, you know, all, all the rest of them. And I think that, you know, when you begin to develop your land acknowledgement, that you could include some of the names, Suckanasset, Waukouit, Te Tikit or Tattikit, Sippawisset, you know, there's others we could probably find, but include some of those just to communicate the fact that, that it is a separate village place from Mashpee. There's a lot of times, you know, I've heard people think that the entire Cape is Mashpee and it isn't. And if we allow that type of thinking to go on, it constitutes historical erasure, basically, because it erases, you know, the memory of the people that were in these places where there are no longer villages. So let's see, the second one, I think is vitally important to include not just, you know, a land acknowledgement, but the, the fact that there are still people here in Mashpee, you know, because the land and the people are, they're like one thing, you know, in our traditional thinking, that was the case. And again, we don't want to just acknowledge the land. A lot of times there's like different groups that work in conservation of some type of tree or animal or piece of land or whatever, and they never make the connection to the Indigenous people of that place, like the, those people, you know, had no influence or no, you know, nothing to do with that land, but the opposite is quite true. And so it's, it's a good thing to be inclusive of the Indigenous people of the area. Also, number three, a land acknowledgement should not be, or it shouldn't become just a rote exercise, you know, not to just check off the box, okay, we've done that, now we get back to other business. But it's really much deeper than that and it is about, and someone was saying that earlier among the Falmouth School Committee, that it's about developing a relationship, you know, with the tribe and with the people and to keep that as a living thing. And to do that, some of the ways that you can do that is to learn the history and the culture, which if you don't know how to do that, because a lot of times people don't know where to look or where to go, we can help you with that. Also, to learn what it means for tribes to be federally recognized or state-recognized or to have neither one of these statuses. Okay, these are all very important, you know, what this all means and what the differences are between the statuses. And within these respective statuses, there are, you know, sets or whatever of Indigenous rights and they will vary, you know, according to the status and the, the point that I wanted to make here, because I've heard this a lot, you know, over the years, is that, you know, other people see us as having special treatment because we have certain fishing rights or, you know, hunting right, whatever it might be. And that is not the case at all. But the fact is, you know, as Natanaa explained so well, we've lost almost 100% of what was our territory. And with the loss of the land comes the loss of the culture because we cannot interact with the land as we always had historically. We're prevented from accessing certain land or water or, you know, what have you, so we can't do the same things. So this, these Indigenous rights are, you're an effort to regain some of that, to, you know, create a balance there. And the last point that I have is to make a commitment to teaching the youth the history. So once you've all learned all this history and all about the culture and everything, you know, we have to figure out a way to get it passed on to, you know, all the young people and to make them aware of the Indigenous people, you know, of this area. I've worked with teachers who've come from all over the country and have told them the same thing, that, you know, find out who the Native people are in your area, whatever state you come from or part of the country. Find out who those people are and do the same thing, learn about the history and the culture, because it's not just Wampanoag history. It's all of our history, you know, particularly, you know, from the early 17th century on. And that's, sometimes people want to go, oh, that's just Indian history. No, no, it's all of our history. So, you know, that's something that has to be understood as well. And that's, that's it for my presentation. I don't know if anyone has any questions, you know, when we're get to the end of our slide presentation here, but thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And I think that is important, what you shared. Knowing that there are over 570 identified tribes in North America. If we could go to the next slide, it is an opportunity. We'd love to hear from you. If we could take a few minutes to reflect on what was just shared about land acknowledgements or maybe your experience with land acknowledgements, questions related to that. Now would be the, the time and this would be a good, good time to insert Jeopardy music right here. So you have the time to reflect and think. But when you're, when and if you're ready, we. When you're ready.
This is so much more fun than a lot of our meetings are. So I saw Jerry had something, was it a question or was it?
No, it was a comment on the, the fact that our letterhead, if you look at the rest of our letterhead, it's Te Tikit Highway for the Falmouth Schools. So that'll help us maybe as we try to remember, you know.
Right.
And not just make, give it a stamp approval and then forget it. So just keep looking at our letterhead.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for this. I, I want to say that this, this is just so helpful to really look at doing a land acknowledgement statement in the right way here in Falmouth. And in short, so the way I'm kind of, as I'm reflecting on this, is the way I'm envisioning it is that we have a statement, but then we have a plan with the statement, right, of how are we embedding the knowledge for ourselves and the knowledge for our students and staff here in Falmouth? So, and then I, I really like that there's, you know, some dates thrown out and looking at what the next steps would be because this makes it that we really have a plan moving forward, which, which I love. So, so that's how I'm looking at it. The, the statement is one piece, but then there's that depth that we need to get to around understanding and learning and listening and then supporting our staff and students and families with that.
Thank you for sharing that. And as a teacher, I would give that an outstanding mark for those remarks. Are there, are there comments or questions before we move along?
Any other questions or comments?
Andrew. I, I also thank you for this. And actually, before I do that, I would be remiss if I did not say my sincere thanks for the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe in offering vaccine appointments to our teachers and school committee members. Deepest gratitude for that. Thank you very much. But based on what you were presenting here, one of the things when I saw some of the slides about making sure this doesn't become a rote exercise and that developing a relationship. So I would really like to know more about what that looks like. What are the other activities that we can take on jointly? Like Leah was saying, doing some of that work in, in learning about the tribes and the history. That might be things that we can take on as individuals. But I certainly would like to and welcome having a little bit more understanding of what we do to develop that relationship. And I guess maybe how to embed that in our school culture so that no matter who comes in to our district and new staff members, new students, that they, they see that that's part of, of what we do.
I can speak to that. Falmouth being one of my district schools, I have five districts that I, that I have to cover within the grant for our mission, which is to provide cultural education and to support Native American, not just Wampanoag, but Native Americans from all, all across Indian country, to support them in their academic growth and to provide professional development for staff members, working with families, you know, providing tutoring and doing different projects and events to promote Native culture. So one of those things would be, you know, visiting the classroom. And now we have all of our professionals that we have a huge bank of professionals that can speak to, to a lot of issues. We're working on a lot of curriculum and Jerry can speak to that as well. And Linda, Natanaa, all, you know, we're all busy with working, curriculum is very important and been a lot of them talk about it and being taught in the schools, which it is in the Mashpee Public Schools right now. So those are some of the things you can work towards. We're setting up field trips for the third and fifth graders to come to the tribe. One, I don't know which one's coming in the fall, but I believe the fifth grader's coming in the fall, the third grader's coming in the spring, where they'll spend the entire day there, you know, until they have to go back and catch the buses, learning about Wampanoags and maybe going over to the museum and doing STEM, STEM in culture partnered activities. So, so we're working in and, you know, working on some projects together.
Do you think the school could have a, a field trip? Can we get a field trip as well?
Well, there's a professional development workshop in the make, in the making right now for August for teachers.
Great. And I'm thrilled with the idea of our students having so many opportunities. But I recognize that I have a lot to learn and so, you know, coming to, to the museum and being part of that, basically what the education that our kids have already. I would love the opportunity to do something like that.
I'm sure that can be arranged and we appreciate that interest level. So we could have ongoing discussions about that. As far as, we, we do have some specifics related to the next steps, but we want to honor anyone else who has comments or questions.
Well, Tony, I know it's just for the school committee, I want to be respectful of the presentation, but is, at the point at the end, will the school committee have a discussion also?
I think we're just going to take the discussion as we, as we go. I mean, if there are other things that are not part of the presentation, we can take those at the end so we don't hold up our guests.
Okay. Well, I just, I have just have a comment if I may then. So just with, you know, all due respect to the, to the presentation, and I've been the supporter of the Wampanoag Tribe, attending the Government Center opening along with our state reps, I actually attended the groundbreaking, the First Light Casino groundbreaking in Taunton as well. With that said, with that said, this is also a, a big request that's being put forth here. And when initially, when you presented, we had two presentations. The presentation was made for the education and we are incorporating that into the, into the school system. My, my daughter, I was on Zoom calls with her, we did a number of days, if not even a whole week, we're covering Wampanoag history and culture. And, and I celebrate that. And then our, one of our school committee members after the presentation was finished, said, is there anything else, anything else we can do? And then your group said, well, what about this? So I'm concerned and I'm against any kind of a, a land reference. With regards to the fact of the land ownership question, whenever something comes into, part of the reason Mashpee wasn't developed for so many years and all the houses are in the eighties were built instead of the forties and whatnot earlier, is because there was a land ownership issue. And any kind of reference to that, I'd be concerned of, I owned land in Mashpee and I had, I had to take out extra insurance, title insurance for that. So anytime you have someone's, and then also I'm always concerned of highlighting one ethnic group over another and I have pride in my European heritage. My grandfather was Sicilian immigrant and he opened, he was a barber in Roxbury. And my grandfather on my side, my grandfather on my mother's side was a Swedish immigrant. And he served in the Coast Guard and traced back to the thirties on Cape Cod. And I'm very proud of that. I'm proud of my European heritage. And looking back at Sicily, Sicily had been, many folks had been involved with Sicily from the Romans and Greeks, the Carthaginians. His transfer of land over here with folks. I'm very also proud of my, you know, the fact that I went to Boselands, we had five signers of Declaration of Independence, including Ben Franklin, Sam Adams and John Hancock. And I'm very proud that this is the United States of America and this is what the, the towns and the states are now. And we all are a beautiful melting pot. And I, and nor do I, when I looked at Manhattan, the Dax had referenced the Dutch being there or, or the Britain that was over in Falmouth at some point too as well, or, or Spain having, if we were in Florida. So with that said, with all due respect, I want to be a gracious host and I really, you know, learned a lot from what we presented tonight, as well as the items that are being taught daily in the Falmouth Public School System. I would defer to the state of Massachusetts if they do incorporate something of this nature at the beginning of public meetings. But with, until that is done, I would say that we open the Falmouth meetings and we say pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and then we move on to the next thing. But thank you for your time and your patience with me presenting that too as well. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't want to cut you off, Jerry, but I would just like to say to our guests, I, I apologize that you had to experience that, that diatribe. I think that, you know, we are very fortunate to have the opportunity to develop a relationship with you, to grow and to learn. And if anything, that is an example that we still need to educate people in that community. And I think that this is a wonderful first step in, in offering a robust education for students and hopefully they'll bring it home and, and share it with their parents as well. So thank you again for being. Thank you, Natalie. Leah?
Can I make a comment? I just, I, I totally agree with Natalie and I just want to say by acknowledging that we are on traditional Wampanoag land here, we are not taking away from anyone else's heritage on that. And I, I think that it's so important for us to be having this acknowledgement of Wampanoag territory here. And I, so I, I disagree with, with John's statement and I support Natalie's statement on that. So I am.
If I, if I, if I could, John, just wanted to share with you that I am an Air Force veteran and I was stationed in Reggio Calabria and I had the opportunity to visit Sicily. So, you know, I hope there's some common ground and we get the opportunity to talk about those things.
Oh, you and I have common ground. I thank you for your service and one of the parts of the United States of America is freedom of speech. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one more slide, but if there's any other comments?
If I can for just a second, the, the Education Department in Mashpee, in the Mashpee Tribe has a, a partnership agreement with the Mashpee Schools and that might be something that Falmouth might want to, to look at to maybe, you know, model some sort of partnership after that. Some of the things that have happened in the past. For example, the Mashpee High School basketball team played a game in our gym. Again, we've, you know, we've had teachers come in, you know, pre-COVID and do tours. Again, we've, you know, we've had teachers come in, you know, pre-COVID and do tours of the tribal offices and things like that. So there's definitely a lot of opportunities. I'm sorry, my. So there's lots of opportunity. Anyway, there's lots of, you know, different ways that 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 a partnership can be approached, you know, I mean, it doesn't have to be exactly what Mashpee has done. But there's, there's many ways that we can be collaborating.
So can I ask you a quick, a quick question about that? So just thinking in terms of process, you know, I think we all recognize that the land acknowledgement is just one piece of a much bigger puzzle that but it was something that we could easily identify that we wanted to move forward on. So the partnership agreement that you met, that you mentioned, was that something that came at the start and then the land acknowledgements and the other pieces sort of followed? What's the sort of order of operations that we should be thinking about that, since you've already got through this?
Sure. So the way that that happened to come about was that our Communications Director at the tribe at the time happened to be friends with one of the members of the Mashpee School Committee. And so I think they just sort of started talking about how how the tribe can have a more a more like consistent presence, I think, in the school. And so it developed between, like, so Trish, who's our communication or was our Communication Director, she just sort of started that dialogue. And so we started meeting. The the land acknowledgement that the Mashpee Schools do actually came out of the partnership. So in that case, the partnership came first. But I don't think there's necessarily, you know, a prescribed order. But I think that, you know, if we can, so they they meet quarterly, that partnership meets quarterly. So it's the school committee and a few different representations. Sorry, I've got another one crying in the other. But so it's the school committee and they meet with, I believe, the Education Director, the Language Department Director, and then sort of whoever is, you know, specifically, you know.
Okay, that's really helpful. I just didn't want to be working backwards just because we latched on to the one thing that we knew we could probably move forward and just be thoughtful about how we how we proceed.
Yeah, I think Roxanne is a great, you know, point of contact to to get that ball rolling. And she can, you know, and I think I, you know Roxanne, right, the director.
And I've been, we have been working with Mike Feeney and talking about the civics courses, the social justice courses, adding content and topics for those particular ongoing courses. And I wanted to mention also that there is, Dr. Faman Silva has a proposal with the Falmouth Select Board related to a land acknowledgement and also Indigenous Peoples' Day. So there is a connection and maybe there'll be similar language, similar inclusion of the different villages and people that represent Falmouth, past and present, in the land acknowledgement. We do have another piece, but if there's other discussion, let's continue.
I think we've, I think, and we can always do questions at the end too. So should we go to the next slide? Is that, okay, great.
That's good. Okay. And what we propose is a professional learning committee, community, rather, a collaboration of Falmouth School Committee representatives. And if you have that interest, you could use chat now to indicate you're interested that in participating as a representative. And then there will be representatives of the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, the four of us, Natana, Linda, Kitty, and myself. And the goal is to create a land acknowledgement for Falmouth Schools. And so we have tentatively, and of course, we'll respect your time periods, set three dates if possible, or three meetings. Hopefully, if we can arrange the date, the first one would be Tuesday at one o'clock, as you see, and that would be all the representatives together to begin the process. And then a second meeting to be held where the Falmouth School reps would then be drafting a land acknowledgement. And then their third meeting where we would all again meet together and finalize that land acknowledgement. And the goal being that we would present that land acknowledgement at the next Falmouth School Committee meeting. But all of those are tentative, and if we need a little more time, we can do that. So your thoughts and feelings? And if you would like to be a part of that, we'd love to have you include your interest in participating on chat at the moment.
I love the diatribe in idea and moving us forward quickly. But I think what I'll have to do is probably have a show of hands of who actually wants to be involved, because I have a feeling we're gonna have to limit it, because I'm guessing a lot of people want to be involved.
Oh, okay.
We have one so far in the chat.
And in the room, I see one, two, three, four, and five hands. And so and we can't have five people participate because that would be a forum of the school committees. So I think I'm gonna need to figure out who we're gonna be able to to join that professional learning community. I love the idea. And I do think we probably are gonna need to stretch the timeline out because between school committee work, committee work, and work, work, I don't know if we can pull it off that quick, but I love the idea of jumping, jumping right in. I think I'm just gonna have to figure out who who's gonna be the ones jumping in.
Thank you.
Can't give you a firm, a firm answer to who is gonna be participating just yet. Does anybody have anything else that they want to, Leah?
Just a suggestion. So as we're, as we're thinking about the school committee as us learning more, I'm just gonna put it out for a thought around our retreat that we do during the summer and maybe having that where we can actually be meeting with the Wampanoag Tribe and learning more. It would be nice to have that be a learning experience. And yes.
I love that. That's great. Thank you for the suggestion. Any other questions or comments or thoughts about how to how to move us forward?
Kelly Jones.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see. I don't have my glasses on. John, go ahead.
No, just a comment that, you know, our school committee members are able to voice their opinion. And I don't feel other folks should have negative aspersions about opinions. We all have different opinions. And at some point, it'll, items will be voted on and they will either be approved or not approved, and that is fine. And I wanted to thank our guests for coming tonight again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Happy Mother's Day to all of those that this applies to.
Oh, thank you. Wonderful. Thank you so much. I can't thank you enough for joining us and we'll be in touch very soon, I think.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, you finally get to go, Lauren.
Brian, would we please promote Mary and Corinne? Thank you for joining us, Principal Gans and Corinne Adams. Tonight, I have a wonderful announcement. I was contacted from the Educator Recognition at DUCY about the Massachusetts Teacher of the Year Program. The Massachusetts Teacher of the Year recognizes teachers who exemplify, simplify, eyes, find teaching in the Commonwealth. A teacher who can speak for and energize the teaching profession and represent the positive contributions of all of our teachers statewide. I was contacted and informed that Corinne Adams, our ceramics teacher at the high school, is a semifinalist in the 2022 Massachusetts Teacher of the Year Program. And it just couldn't happen to a better person. Corinne is so wonderful. And I actually brought some of the students' work from her her program. Well, I didn't bring him, Corinne, loaned them to me. And this is particular, this process, I would love for Corinne, in a few minutes, to kind of share what this process is, because this isn't just a beautiful piece. When I was in the, a couple of weeks ago, in her room, I saw that. I thought it was beautiful. And then there's this beautiful swan. Those, I just had to have a couple of pieces to show because she is such a wonderful teacher. And the students are just so energized and and just, they're they're happy, right? It's it's just the class that that makes everyone feel good. But before I turn over to Corinne to maybe talk about one of her processes, I know that Principal Gans is very excited to tell us a little bit about Corinne.
Yeah, Corinne is has always been an amazing art and ceramics teacher. And I have to say though, this year more than ever, if you can imagine being a teacher in a hands-on class that requires clay and materials and tools among, you know, 100 students and having many students who are remote. Her organization and our main office that has students and parents dropping off clay and picking up clay and getting things done. She has just been phenomenal. And having students produce top-notch work, even while they've been remote, has just been incredible. So when Corinne let me know that she had been selected as a semifinalist, it was no surprise to me. And I just am so proud of her and so thankful that our students get the benefit of her. And she's just an incredible colleague. She's a wonderful person all the way around.
Yes, she is. Thank Corinne. We are so excited for you. And this was just such wonderful news. We just had to share it with everyone. But can we go back? Can you just tell us about this process? Because this is a gorgeous fish. This is just beautiful.
Oh, do we lose?
Oh, it's.
Oh, there you are.
Okay, because earlier I didn't have the mute button, but now I do. So so the the one you're talking about is, it's called Raku firing. This is a process that you cannot do inside. So we went on a, I think, the first field trip for, you know, what, a year and a half? We went to the Katuah Center for the Arts and worked with Lois Horstberg. So the ceramics forest students, seven of us, went there. We prepped the clay. And so this is an outdoor activity. The pieces come out of the kiln when it's hot, so almost 2,000 degrees. So Lois and I wear our protective gears. And then it goes into a metal trash barrel with newspaper and sawdust. So since it is so hot, it ignites itself. So the smoke, the flames, and then whatever glazes on there creates those colors. And it's a, I mean, it's a hands-on activity. It's something that not everyone gets to do. So the students were very excited to be able to be part of it. And the other best part, actually, besides doing this, was that they haven't seen each other as a group, because these are the ceramics forest students, right? They've been in ceramics for four years. They haven't seen each other basically for a year and a half. They've seen each other on Zoom, but that's about it. So the the other good thing about that field trip was them all together for a good morning, doing a fun activity. So.
Oh, that's great. That is amazing.
That is, it's very exciting. And I just want to say again that Corinne does exemplify the fine teaching in Falmouth. And so thank you for representing us as one of the semifinalists of Massachusetts. And it's a wonderful day today that we're able to honor Corinne, because today is Teacher Appreciation Day. And it's such a great day. One of my favorite quotes is, "A teacher takes a hand, opens a mind, and touches a heart." And to Corinne and to all of our teachers, we thank you very much every day for all you do for our students. Thank you, Corinne. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I mean, I know I was nominated, but I think every teacher this year should have been nominated because it is pretty crazy what we're going through. And I mean, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, leave it at that.
Yeah, we agree. You know, it's been, it's been challenging, to say the least. But that does not at all diminish the honor. And so, you know, our warmest congratulations to you. It's it's a really a wonderful honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Corinne.
And I'm sure you'll let us know what happens.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the next thing on my list, oh, I guess it's my COVID update.
The good news.
But so actually, the COVID update is actually good news as well. The positive cases are lower in Falmouth. In fact, since May 1, that was only a few days ago on Saturday, but there's only been three cases in Falmouth since May 1. That is a lot lower. We've only had one case in Falmouth Public Schools since then, and that was on, it was a Sunday report. We did have to do some tracing for that, but it was minimal and that's the only one so far. So I think that was good news. And then I just want to share a little bit about the vaccination progress that we're making. Right now, I've reported, I want us to report it. There may be more employees that have had their vaccination, but just haven't reported it yet. But right now, we're at 63% of our staff. And we just continue to encourage, you know, everyone to get vaccinated. And we have 20 students that have reported so far.
That was my next question for you, actually. Do, how do we, how in and should our our students that have been vaccinated notify, like, should they, who should they tell? And how do they do that?
So we sent home a letter with all the families that have a 16-year-old odor and encouraged them to share the information with us, just like they would any other vaccines or what, so that we have it on record. It helps, it's good to know because we, the information, but really it helps us with the contact tracing, right? So because if you've been vaccinated, you do not have to quarantine. And you know, so it's good information to have. It helps us. But they're starting to share, they're starting to come in. This is early, we just asked last week. And so we're starting to get those as well. So we're very, we're excited about that.
Can I make a COVID-related plug?
Sure.
So, so today, I I think it was just as of today, or maybe even yesterday, the state has allowed pre-registration for anyone ages 12 and up in anticipation of the vaccine being available for 12 to 16 or 18-year-olds, depending on which one it is. So you can actually go on and pre-register anyone that age. And then you'll be notified when there's an appointment available, which I think is really exciting news. And you don't have to navigate the constantly trying to find an appointment thing. They just send you one.
Yes.
Could we maybe send where, send to families where they could pre-register their 12 and up child?
Yes.
That would be, I would love.
I'll find out that information and we'll send it out to our families.
I'll send you.
Okay, because I did it today. Absolutely. Absolutely. Great.
Thanks.
I just want, just as a reminder that, you know, you you do need, if you're doing the two shots, you do need your two shots, and then you do need to wait two weeks after that last shot to be fully vaccinated. So if there are staff or students who are in between those, they would not qualify as fully vaccinated for, they would still have to quarantine. So just, just to be.
Good PSA.
You're, you're absolutely right. And our nurse Jennifer is so good, offers spreadsheets. She's got the first, the second, and then you're fully vaccinated. So she, for quarantine purposes, she's got all of that tracked. But thank, you know, thank you. That's absolutely right. Good information for everyone else.
Yeah, because it is a long period that you go through. So just, yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Just a quick one on that. Lauren, have you recently asked the staff again about recording? Because I think there may have been some people who have missed the first request about sending in their vaccination status. And maybe just a reminder.
Absolutely.
Might actually show that number being a little bit different.
Okay, all right. Okay, so the next thing on the list that I would like to discuss is the potential option for virtual learning next year. So DUCY is anticipating full in-person return to school come fall. And there may be some families that may be still hesitant to want to come in full-time and may still want to have a remote option. The remote option is not going to be granted for next year. However, what DUCY is allowing is for districts to establish a single district virtual school. So it is a separate school from our other schools. It would not be teachers teaching remote and in-person. This would be full virtual teachers in a virtual setting for our students. So it is a, it's an option that we can think about. The, one of the rules around that is that our choice students cannot participate. So it's only residents of the district that can participate. So that's one piece of it. We have to, you know, we have to do everything, you know, from the curriculum, the social emotional aspect. We have to make sure there's a nurse connected. So all the aspects of a school would need to be in place for this virtual school. So, and, and that's, and that school would be part of the accountability system. And so, so the reporting would be out through our virtual school, just like it would be for any other school as well. So I feel that when we did this last, in March, we did the last survey to families. And we had, you know, still 14% choosing at five grades, five and six, 20% at grade seven and eight, and 30% at the high school. And then we still have quite a number of children that are remote at the elementary school that could have come in full-time at any point during the year. That, it makes me wonder if it's an option that we should provide for our families for next year. It is something that my team has discussed at length. We believe that we, we can provide this opportunity. And then it would give us an opportunity, at least for a year, and then to think, to evaluate it at the end of the year to see if this is something that we would want to continue or not continue. But I, I feel that it's, it's important to have that option for our families, at least coming this fall and, and for the next school year. So the process is that we submit an application. And in the application, actually, we, you know, we have to discuss the staffing, the enrollment, the structured learning time, that time on learning, accessibility, our Students with Disabilities Plan, our EL plans, plans for meals, physical education, like I mentioned, the social emotional component. When you say all of those things, we did all that this year in a, in a remote setting for our, our children. And, and we believe we can make that leap to make this a, a full virtual experience. So the timeline is to submit a first application on this Thursday, on May 6. And we are prepared. So we have been working on it. And then if we move past that first benchmark, then it comes back to the school committee for a vote because the school committee has to approve this. So not asking for a vote or, you know, maybe questions now. And, and then at some point, we would come back to you if we get past the first benchmark and to see if this is something that you would approve. But I wanted to start discussing it early and, and see what kind of questions or support or non-support for, for something like this for Falmouth Public Schools.
Great.
The only thing that entered my mind was, how do you cover enough high school subjects if you have the high school level? I mean, it's great. I just, that just kind of.
So the last piece that, that we're trying to figure out right now is if we would, would, if we would start, you know, and go from pre-K through eighth grade and, or sixth grade. And then if this was successful, we would add each year. But part of what I'm concerned is, is that we may have families, especially because of the surveys of our upper grades. So we would have to post positions, like a .2 science teacher, a .4 science teacher. So it wouldn't be a one full-time equivalent of a teacher that may be in, in the school, but it would be a, you know, portion of a teacher. And we do that kind of now as we need. You know, if, if we need an additional .2 or .4 or .6, like, you know, if it's a, you know, science teacher. Last year, we had a .4. We have a .6 Lawrence as a language teacher. As, you know, so, and all the options would be there. So we, we believe that we can actually do this. And at first, we thought, well, it would be easier to start, as you said, right, with the other grades and then, and then add on. But I really think if we're going to serve our community well, we have to figure out how to do it all, all the way through to the, to 12th grade. Yes.
Or it'd be the additional cost. And I, I just asked out of curiosity, because in public education, I, I agree with you. We have to really support this. Because, again, quote, "public education," we take care of you. We teach.
Yeah. So right now, our S of $3, that is quite, quite a, a large amount of money. I don't remember the exact, kind of looking to see Patrick. He was back on. But when he, when we figured out how much money we were getting, Patrick came in to me one day and he said, "You have to think big." And, and I, and I feel like this is something that we really should consider. And if I'm thinking big, and, and because they're about the COVID dollars, right? Those S of dollars that we were getting, it's about, in COVID, what do we need to do for our families? Some school districts are thinking infrastructure, right? Some still need technology needs, so, you know, so big purchases and such, but, but we don't need that, right? We have all of that. And, and this is an opportunity perhaps. Now, we're going to get this application in. We're using the numbers from this last survey. If we make it over the first hurdle, of course, we're going to survey our families to see interest. And if, and, and there may not be, right? I mean, that's the other thing. Then we wouldn't have to proceed. But if there is the interest for this, because we're, you know, I know that we're getting more and more people vaccinated, but we're still in a pandemic right now. Yeah.
So I fully support this, you know, knowing that you've done all of this background work because it is complicated. Because what if you have, you know, one student in kindergarten and one student in third grade? You know, how, what is that going to look like? I, I have a question that is somewhat related, just in thinking about how COVID goes through families and households. And just knowing that some students sometimes are out for multiple weeks, you know, if it's going through the house. What would, because this would be a separate school, would students who are in our traditional schools have the opportunity to still be able to access education?
Well, no, that's, yes, that might be a different question, right? So as we do now, if anything's a temporary quarantine, then yes, they engage with the teachers, their classroom teachers. I thought you were going to ask, can they engage in the virtual school? But the virtual school is a full enrollment. They have, you know, so it is, it, and that's what the guidelines around that is. It is, it, it's a completely separate school with, with its own enrollment, so. But the other, as part of our plan of coming back next fall, I, I can't imagine that that, that's not going to continue as a plan.
Okay.
But there was. We don't have any guidance from Dussey, you know. And they're, they're saying June, maybe July at the earliest for next year.
I'm hoping they do allow some remote aspects for that piece. But I, I do, I support this and knowing that our families, we'll know how many families want to continue with this. But it also is, you know, we don't, there are many children who cannot get vaccinated. So, you know, even if we're going at 12 and up, there's 11 and under who can. And what does that mean for families? It was important, so, yeah.
Andrew.
Lori, I'm glad you talked about, you know, doing more surveying, you know, initial applications, you know, coming up, it can't be done before that, obviously. But I guess I'm thinking of several things. Partially, it's that idea of, you know, what would those numbers look like? What is the actual interest? Because it may be inflated just because of how things rolled out and timing, right? If that, if the pullback to school was going to be maybe happening in January, it may have looked different instead of being with eight weeks left and people are like, you know, kind of, maybe once a point. But really, based on all of the feedback that you'll get from that survey, is there a minimum threshold for moving forward on this? Either from the state or what you would think would be financially feasible?
And that, and that's actually a good question that we, we may have, have to obviously determine, determine that. I, I don't have the answer for you right now on whether it is, I guess, thinking positively that I, I think there's probably going to be enough students across the district that may fill up at least one class per grade or one, you know, one group per grade. If, if that's not the case, then we certainly would have to rethink.
Yeah, because I guess I'm also thinking about ensuring that those students in the virtual school have, you know, their social unit as well, their classroom, their board, whatever you want to call it, you know, as opposed to. Do you think, do you think we would have a sense about that before it came to the school committee that we would have to vote?
Yeah, I absolutely. As we continue to plan, I mean, if the interest is here, then we will submit the application and then we'll start, we'll keep, you know, planning forward on that. Obviously, we can't wait till last minute. But yeah, I would like to, to survey families to see if they're, you know, if this is something they're interested in. We have a number of families, as did every district this year, also moved from school to homeschool. And, and I'm wondering if, if there was this other option as well? Would, would perhaps they would kind of join back in a virtual school if they weren't ready to come back to, you know, in, in-person experience of it? Just, you know, but kind of thinking of some different options. Families made different choices this year.
So Lori, the timeline, so I know that you said the first application is due Thursday. So what are your next benchmarks?
Yes, so, so we submit, they'll do their review. They will provide us with full feedback on June 4. And then between June 4 and July 6, the school committee needs to vote. And then that would go back to them, to Dussey after the vote. So it would be one of your June meetings that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. I did not finish. I did start that now.
I am. I appreciate that, that you're already thinking about the needs that our families are going to have next year. We haven't even survived this one yet. But, but it's easy to, to see that different families are going to need different things. And trying to solve ahead of time what we'll provide for that, I think is, is really, is wonderful. And I appreciate it.
Okay. So I have a question.
Oh, you do. I'm sorry. You have a, you have a list. I, I do. I'm so sorry. It's great.
Just real quick, I just, the Wounded Warriors Soldier Ride, the Falmouth Ride, is going to come back this year. So on May 21. And so our, we will not be able to take the, the full complement of students that usually like to go and, and wave to our heroes. But we are having a number of classes from North Falmouth, Mullen Hall, Morse Pond, and Lawrence walk to the bike path and be able to wave. And then all of our students at the elementary, once again, are, are making the cards to share. So I just wanted to share, I was excited that they were able to make that live again this year. It feels like we're, every little step like that is moving us more toward those normal activities that, that we see each year. The, the next thing I wanted to mention, of course, our high school came back full-time on Monday, and that, yesterday. And that was very exciting. I went over to, to visit, and I went during lunchtime because, just kind of to see how it's different. It was also when Principal Gans and her team rolled out their new QR code so that they could select where they wanted to sit. And I have to tell you, our lunchrooms are much liv, much more lively now with all that. But we had the outdoor seating. It was a beautiful day yesterday. We had outdoor seating for the seniors. That's that senior privilege. They get to be under the tents. We have the freshman students in the small gym, so they have their area. And then the other gyms were, you know, for the other two grades. And, and it, it really was really nice to see because that's part of that whole high school culture. And I felt like, you know, we were getting back to that. People were enjoying it. It was, it was joyful. And there's more desks in the classrooms. Classrooms are bigger, so it was fun. But I don't know if Mary wants to add anything to that, but I have Mary here to actually talk to us about our graduation plans, since that was a question last week. So Mary, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Yeah, I, I want to commend the teachers and students at the high school for a very smooth rollout so far. A day and a half, really, because today was a half-day. But having, we've got about 65% to 70% students back full-time. And it's, so far, it's been really great. You know, we did have to create an extra space for lunch, just having, you know, not the alternating winks with hybrid students. And we assigned the freshmen to the small gym. And I know a few freshmen had griped to me, why do we have to be there? But I have to say that, as Dr. Dor said, I was in the small gym for the two lunch waves yesterday and they were very lively. And unlike before, when we had assigned seats and they didn't get to pick where they could sit. So it was, it was like a library before. So it was really nice to see much more social interaction. So kudos to the students, though, and the teachers. And the students are really following the rules. And it's, it's, it's been great so far. So knock on wood, it will continue that way. In terms of graduation, so we're very lucky this year that we don't have to delay graduation to July, like we did last year. And we are planning on an outdoor graduation on the turf field on June 5, as originally scheduled. And one of the things that, in, in order to pull off this type of graduation so that we follow all the applicable COVID protocols, is we need a, a great number of volunteers from our staff to help out. And I'm really pleased to say, we already have 30 staff members who have volunteered to do this. And I just really, I want to commend them and thank them because it's a, you know, it's giving up your weekend to do this. And I, I just really appreciate it because we couldn't do it without that number of volunteers. So that's wonderful that we've already had that number. We do plan to have all of the seniors sitting on the field together as a group as they would, for example, in a typical graduation in the field house. And then we will have assigned sections on the field for the family members that, and groups that, the guests that seniors get to invite. We are able to accommodate up to four guests per senior, which is nice. And Ryan Weber has been instrumental in, with the technology and the setup. And I will be sending out information this week. We do need to have families preregister. And in that preregistration, they have to attest to the fact that they will not come if they have tested positive for COVID or if they have symptoms and that sort of thing. So we're following the Dussey guidance with that. We're really looking forward to it. I'm just really glad that we can have a, an in-person graduation on schedule. And pray for rain, I mean, pray for no rain. Pray for sun. We do have a rain date, is what I meant. But we really pray for nice weather that weekend so that we hopefully will be able to pull it off on Saturday. The rain date is Sunday, the 6th, at 10:30 a.m. as well. But I'm really hoping that we can get it all done on the 5th.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for coming and sharing.
Yeah, I have a question. So maybe it hasn't already been addressed, but what about prom? Is there a prom?
The, the senior. The senior class faculty advisors and the senior class offices are actually working on a senior celebration. So we're hoping to have details this week. It just hasn't been finalized yet.
Great. And no junior prom, no, no prom for the juniors this year?
No, but the junior class, I believe, and I don't mean to speak for them, but I, I have been in communication with the class officers and the, I mean, the class advisors. They are thinking that they may try to do, depending on if we're allowed to, an actual prom in the fall. And then still do, they'll do their junior prom in the senior fall year and then still do all of their senior events. and then still do all of their senior events as they otherwise would, assuming everything, you know, we have a green light for all of that.
That's wonderful, because just like you were saying with the lunch example, you know, we need the joy.
Exactly.
Great. Were there other questions? I'm sorry. Oh, John.
Yeah, no, Mary, I just wanna commend you and all the staff and everyone at the, at the high school that the graduation is a, you know, that is really a culmination of all this work this year. The guidance office too, of helping students get set with college, even with regards to the, you know, what's been going on and everything. And oftentimes, there's a phrase that folks say across the country of, of we can do better. As, as far as I'm concerned with Mary Gans, we can't do better. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Sean. You might be able to do a little better, but.
I don't think so. Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Yep, and, and like I said, hopefully information will be out this week for graduation. We were trying to tie up some final details and that's why it's been just a, a little bit delayed.
Great, thanks.
And for our summer learning, was the other requested information for the summer? Dr. Talyer and Dr. Woodward?
I think we're both being polite on which one's gonna go first. So I just wanted to be able to share with the committee and with the public that we are going to be able to offer the Summer Learning Academy again this summer. Last summer was the first time that we had offered summer learning experiences for our students entering grades one through six. So we are looking at doing that again this summer. Thank you to Principal Capzavellus and the staff at T-Ticket. We're going to be able to host the Summer Learning Academy at T-Ticket Elementary School again this summer. As we continue forward, we do have a posting currently up through our team in HR for a director for the Summer Learning Academy. And then we will be securing teachers for the Summer Learning Academy following the identification of a director. And we are looking to increase the use of the outdoor classroom spaces that have been created over the course of the year and to add to the hands-on learning experiences that our students started last year as they helped us build the program. And also increasing the amount of face-to-face interaction and in-person learning through the Summer Learning Academy experience. Dr. Woodward?
Thank you. And so I just wanted to provide a bit more information about our extended school year services. Again, our program will run the six weeks, beginning July 6th, running through August 12th. During that time, we'll be providing our traditional ESY special ed services that do, that does include academic instruction as well as our specialized programs for eligible special education students, preschool through post-grad. These services will be provided in person at Falmouth High School, but we will be also offering a remote option if there's a need because extended school year is considered to be an extension of this academic school year. And since there were options, excuse me, options for remote learning during this school year, we are obligated to ensure that we're providing that throughout the summer. Again, if there's the need. We do have some new elements to the programming this year. We'll be shifting to more thematic lessons each week. And with that, we'll have corresponding community outings and/or special events aligned to the theme of that week. We'll be adding in some more additional engagement activities for our students. And this year, we're also gonna be introducing some peer opportunities into our programs. Which a little something that's unique to this summer, we're also gonna be providing the COVID compensatory services. So I think people are familiar with what compensatory services are for special education. But when we look at the impact that COVID had, the worldwide health pandemic had on our learning, COVID compensatory services are really taking a look at the, they focus on the needs of the whole student as a result of that impact. So we will also be providing additional services in our ESY programs to meet those needs. And then additionally, we'll be continuing to offer and add some additional counseling services to students as needed throughout the summer. And this is going to help support our students that have been struggling, will continue to, may continue to need the check-ins and the supports, but also for our students that have been remote or primarily remote and they're transitioning back into the school as we look forward to September. So happy to answer any additional questions if you may have them.
That's great, I, I love the, the addition of those counseling pieces because it's gonna be quite a transition. And we, kids that are struggling, we don't wanna lose them over the summer and not have them all ready to start up again. Any questions about summer learning? Bill, this was yours, did you?
No.
All right, great, very much, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sonia, thank you, Jim. And one last thing, I have to give a, a big shout out to Reverend Nell Fields from the Lockwood Congressional Church. She is partnering with us so that we can engage in a partnership with Happy Hope Factory. The Happy Hope is known for doing activity bags for children that are hospitalized. We first learned about it from a group of our high school students that as part of their service learning would go to the Happy Hope Factory and pass it and, and create bags of goodies for children that are, that are hospitalized. And this is a nationwide program. So I first heard about it in this latest campaign. They are creating cards with a toothbrush. It goes to children that are in shelters and, you know, to food pantries for children in need. So it's a child creating, coloring the, the card and they put their name on the back and then a toothbrush goes with it. So it's sending joy from one child to another. And each one is a dollar and the dollar, the donation goes back to the Happy Hope Factory for developing these, these bags for children around the hospital. So it's, it's, you know, it's, it's connected in many ways. So I always worry about, you know, as, having to ask every child to bring a dollar in. And, but I want every child to participate, it would break my heart if every kid did not get to. And I was talking to Reverend Nell one day and she's like, I've got you covered. So she has donated the thousand dollars so that every one of our children can complete a card and sign a name to another child that they'll be happy. One of the things I, I really believe in is that schools should reflect the dinner, reflect the values of the community. And, and this community since I have arrived has just shown itself over and over about how generous. People are always lending that, that hand and helping others, whether it's, it's money or if it's, if it's time, but we are never short of volunteers or those that help out. And so, and so I think in school, like we, we wanna always encourage that action. And so our kids will get to feel that joy of helping another child. So anyway, I, it's a, I, I'm just so happy that, that we actually made this happen.
Thank you, Reverend Nell, thank you for watching. John?
Just a question, that sounds like a wonderful program. Is there, and I saw, you said that it would go to children that are in, you know, homeless or other dynamics too, I believe, or is there, are the hospitals, are there, are they designated hospitals like Falmouth Hospital or Children's Hospital or?
So there are hospitals across the, the nation. I don't, I'm not sure I could actually specifically answer like which ones or if it's all in need, if it's different, I'm not sure about, but that, but it's hospital. I'll probably get you more information and answer that question and, and send that information to you.
That'd be outstanding, just because within my experience with the No Kid Hungry that we participated in, my family that we were able to, and some of the local businesses did. We did it for a couple of years and, and then in like year two, we were able to focus the money right back to the, the Falmouth shelters. So that might be something that, you know, maybe just like a checkbox that we can request and then have the money earmarked for, you know, for Falmouth folks. Just a thought, thank you.
Any last, oh gosh, Terry, thank you so much. Any last questions from Laura Sutcliffe? They worked it out, it was great. All right, well, thank you very much. So we have a bit of a change. Next on our agenda, we were gonna act on the Carousel license to use Mullen Hall grounds this summer, but we got an email today from Troy that the insurance provider doesn't have, can't provide a copy of the binder for another week or so. So we're just gonna table this so that we have all the documents that we said we wanted to have on hand ahead of time. And there's plenty of time, so we can take it up at our next meeting.
I just have a, an edit on the document itself. And hopefully, if I mention it now, that when Troy comes back with the insurance provider, provide whatever, that it will be all cleared up and then my edit won't hold anything else up.
Great idea.
So on letter O, there should be no alcohol or smoking on school property. Could we just cite out our actual policy on that? Because we don't just prefer to no alcohol and smoking. We could just use our actual, thanks very much.
That's a great idea.
Thanks.
Yeah, so that includes things like vaping and all the whole.
We worked so hard.
Get the most out of that policy.
Great.
Thank you.
This is gonna get, did anybody else notice anything else that we would want to tweak before we come back?
I just, I have a question because it says precautions related to COVID-19. And we just, under the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have some different guidelines around things. So I'm wondering, because it's on school property, would that mean that they would pertain to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education?
I would think if not, because it's a town.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay.
Everything's changing so much with the
Right.
And that's why we kind of left it open, because we work what it is now. It's not gonna be what it is from ever long.
So it will be town, not school.
Yeah, I don't, our, our, actually aren't that different. So it would be close and we're just, but
We've definitely checked, yeah, make sure.
I think that we agreed to keep it vague though for the reason of the ever-changing COVID-19.
Right. Right. Uh, John?
Well, this wouldn't necessarily be for an edit, but since you were asking about topics of this, what the, my understanding is, is that the, the land that we, the, the committee had signed over to the Select Board had not been, you know, once it was denied from the town that it would, you know, come back to the school district. So I just wanted to aid to see if we could, you know, follow up on that as like closure on that. And then, and then I know in general that we did not voted for having any kind of a fee. But I do know, you know, that the, a couple of years ago, the, the, the revenue from the taxes was listed at sixty-two thousand dollars and we got, as a school district, two thousand dollars. I would just request that, you know, which was three percent, I would request maybe some kind of formula of maybe ten percent of whatever the proceeds would, the revenues would be, that maybe that would go back to the school district. Just a suggestion, thank you.
I just wanna make sure I understand your question. So you want a formula in the, whoops, I spelled wrong, in the, in the license? Is that what you mean?
I, I think if, I, I think if, you know, just as far as maybe a request to the, to the Carousel Committee because the, I know, I, I would love to put it in there as part of the license being a ten percent, but I don't think it would get voted and approved on because we didn't, we didn't approve it last time. We removed the fee. But I just think, you know, maybe it's something to consider, just some kind of a, you know, rather than it just being X amount that, you know, to make, you know, whatever. In that case, they made sixty-two thousand, we got three percent, two thousand. So whatever the math would be, I would think, you know, they may consider, we suggest, maybe they could do, consider ten percent. And then, you know, whatever they're able, or they conclude would be a fair item, but that could be kind of a baseline. So in the case of making sixty-two thousand dollars, like they did, I think it was two thousand seventeen on their tax returns, then it would be sixty-two hundred dollars would go to the school district, for example.
Okay, I think I got it, thank you.
Thank you.
And so that moves up, since we're moving past that and we'll bring it back in, on the 18th, that moves us to the presentation and acting on the superintendent's evaluation.
I am taking this.
Thank you. Trying to make sure I share the right thing here. Okay, so to the school committee, you received a copy of the full end-of-cycle summative evaluation report that was told me seven days ago in an email. So this presentation will sort of recap the process and give the public and the committee a summary of our findings. So as we all know, the summative evaluation is the last piece of the puzzle in the year-long process for evaluating the superintendent. And here is a summary of the performance standard terms. We're familiar with them, but I think it's important for the public to understand the, the ratings. So unsatisfactory and needs improvement, those are pretty self-explanatory. Proficient is, that rating is for practices understood to be fully satisfactory. So this is a rigorous expected level of performance. And then exemplary, a rating of exemplary in the case that practices significantly exceed proficient and could serve as a model of practice regionally or statewide. So within the evaluation process, there are four standards that Lori is rated on based on observations and the year-long work that she has done and also goals that she's set for herself. So for standard one, instructional leadership, which covers curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluation, data-informed decision-making and student learning. She overall, the rating was proficient. Standard two, management and operations. The environment, HR management and development, scheduling and management, information systems, law, ethics and policies and fiscal systems. The overall rating was exemplary. Standard three, family and community engagement, which includes obviously engagement, sharing responsibilities, communication and family concerns. Overall rating was proficient. And standard four, professional culture, which includes commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, communication, continuous learning, a shared vision and managing conflict. Overall rating was proficient. So again, beyond these performance ratings, Lori also set goals for herself this year. The first goal, student learning related to the implementation of a district-wide plan and school-specific plans in response to COVID-19. Overall rating was that she exceeded her goal in this area. District improvement goal number one, focusing on equity, inclusion and diversity. This goal was met. District improvement goal number two, addressing homework policy and practice concerns in grades pre-12. This goal was also met. And the final goal, professional practice goal of completing the new superintendent induction program her final year, which I'm sure she's thrilled about, has also been met. So overall, taking everything into account, Dr. Dor's overall rating this year was proficient, which is an excellent rating. So thank you very much for being here and all that you've done this year, especially this year. And then, you know, I'd like to open up to all of us, are there any specific comments that you'd like to make about the evaluation or your feedback overall for the year? I think this would be a great time to share.
I think that this process is fantastic because it really makes you sit down and go through step by step what her goals were and really kind of reflect on what we've seen as far as, you know, Lori's participation in the community and everything that she's done. So as I was going through my process, of course, being on the, the committee as well, being able to pull all the information together to put the summative together. I mean, it's just glaringly obvious to me how amazing you have had that. So not only, I think that Kelly had said it in, in one of her summaries was, it's, it's hard enough to be a superintendent on any Goodyear, let alone a COVID year. And from having to go into the schools and rearrange the desks and creating the opportunity for families to have both, you know, home learning as well as going into school if they wanted. And then honestly, any child that changed their mind and decided they wanted to go remote, you were able to shift them. Offering that flexibility to families was huge. And that just shows how committed you are to the families and to the kids. So I personally would like to thank you for your high level of, of integrity, your character and your dedication and commitment to the schools. and your dedication and commitment to the schools.
So to just tack on to that one thing, and I don't even think I put it in my evaluation because there was just way too much to absorb. You know, there was just so much this year. And I don't think there's any way to capture every element of this insanity that we've had during COVID in one document. I just don't think it's entirely possible. But so one thing I did want to add on to what Lisa said is that, you know, when we were in this spot last year, we were worried about just keeping people safe. And so if we reevaluate and like look at it the way we were seeing it through those eyes, not only did we manage to keep people safe, but we managed to do all of these other robust things that you mentioned. And that's not to be taken lightly because that was the original priority. Let's just keep everybody healthy. And so I just want to read a sentence so I don't ramble that I had put in my evaluation. Like Lisa said, I had said something about during, being superintendent during a pandemic. And then I said that Dr. Door has continually considered the impact of COVID-related schooling decisions on families, the community and our students. And she's managed competing interests and conflicts through an unbelievably challenging year. Through it all, she's worked to build understanding of the issues, worked to bridge divides, followed the ever-evolving DSE and state guidance and demonstrated the utmost ethical behavior and professionalism. Her commitment to Falmouth students and staff is evident in all of her work and I cannot say enough here to express my praise and gratitude for her exemplary leadership this year. Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, everybody, you know, the COVID part is over and everything, but other work that was done this year on the equity, inclusion and diversity, this was a national theme. It could be contentious at times. It could be, you know, touch people's feelings and stuff. And we, after a lot of, a lot, a lot, a lot of work, we got a job description for our, I just, last one I wanted to say.
Diversity, equity and inclusion coordinator.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
Officer.
Officer.
Yeah, that was such a process and so made huge strides there. That's good. Thank you.
All right, any last comments? Phil?
Yeah, one of the things that I really like to compliment you is the organization collaboration of the preparation for COVID. Even though some of it was state-related, as to come up with a plan with in-person hybrid and whatever the other one was, there were so many times. I thought that part was handled excellently. But the thing that impressed me more than anything was the fiscal responsibilities. You received additional dollars. And to know where to put the emphasis on and create a learning experience for kids with additional support staff, bus drivers, you name it, the whole nine yards. I thought that was just a great way to get the school district together. And I was obviously great to see those extra dollars coming in and I hope they continue to come in. But thank you for that.
Thank you, Phil. Andrew, did I say your hand to you yet?
Yes, I wanted to add and not try to repeat anything that's already been said, but that, you know, in so many conversations that are had, particularly in various subcommittee work that we do, I would just hear additional pieces of the puzzle that we don't see because they're just being dealt with seamlessly. And a suggestion would come up where an idea would come up and it just over and over again, Lori would just go, oh yes, we dealt with that. We figured this out. And you just could see this like mountain piling up of all these things that just aren't seen by the public because they were dealt with seamlessly. And that's huge when people, you know, are coming at this from so many different directions and different lenses to know that those things were happening. And then, you know, and another thing that I was just talking about in a subcommittee the other day was that, you know, with the year that we knew we were going into, we could have just said, let's just get through this year with all of the additional things, measuring rooms and doing all that is, that's going to be required. But we didn't stop there. So, you know, the wellness subcommittee has been, you know, continuing to make a lot of progress on developing a plan with various goals. The homework advisory committee went forward. I mean, some of these things I could have seen us easily take off our plate if we had to. The work on equity, and Terry had addressed that, but in addition to developing that job description, I had written about the fact that we are implementing restorative justice practices, addressing disparities and discipline, professional development on cultural proficiency, providing all the resources for staff and for parents. I mean, any of those things would be a big thing to take on in a regular year and all this stuff was still happening. So even though this could have been a year to just cause forward progress as I made on so many fronts and I think that's my.
Okay, so, oh, sorry. Do you want to say something?
No, I just want. Thank you. Thank you for all of your support. But I will tell you, I have an incredible team behind me. And so as we look at the team here, Dr. Teller, Dr. Woodward, Dr. Santa, Mr. Murphy, all of the principals are incredible and we have incredible staff. And, you know, that's what Falmouth is about. So it's, it's all collaboration and team effort for sure. But, but thank you. Thank you.
So our next step is to just accept the summative evaluation, which is the compilation of all the individual pieces. And so is there a motion to accept the final summative evaluation? I make.
No, she was the chairman of the committee. She should do it.
I make a motion to accept the final summative evaluation of Superintendent Door.
And I would like to second that.
No, we have to add it. Any last thoughts or questions, comments, anything? Okay. And it's a roll call vote. John?
Andrea, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea and Carl, yes.
Terry?
Terry Meders, yes.
Natalie, Natalie Calhoun, yes.
Melissa Keef, yes.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill?
Ryder, yes.
And Kelly Welch also, yes, so that passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody. And thanks for the alterations and evaluations and all the work that goes into that. And of course, I already turned over my agenda like we're finished. So next, I think it's just routine business.
Right.
To approve the meeting minutes from April the 27th.
With the revision that was sent to us.
This is the revised version that you got today.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes that are in our packet.
Great, thank you. Andrea's got a second. Any other comments or edits to the minutes?
Just to refresh you on what the revision was, please.
That was a miscommunication between me and Sharon. She wanted to know the name of the conference and I gave her the one that was coming up and she was talking about the other one. So I was horrified.
A correction of the name of the conference. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrea.
And it's a roll call. Any last things? It's a roll call vote, John?
Andrea, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea and Carl, yes.
Terry? Terry Meders, yes.
Natalie? Natalie Calhoun, yes.
Melissa? Melissa Keef, yes.
Lisa? Lisa Hart, yes.
Leah? Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill?
Ryder, yes.
Kelly Welch also, yes, so that passes unanimously as well. Thank you very much for that. And committee, committee member reports. Does anybody have any updates, requests, reports, issues? Yes?
I've got a quick one. At the last Vips Board Directors meeting, Julie Williams-Tinkum, who is the Director of Physical Education, Wellness, Health and Wellness, conducted a training for the board that's called Out for Safe Schools that supports LGBTQ students. Basically goes through, this training has been doing it with staff as well to try to give tips for allies and how they can support our LGBTQ students. There are things to talk about how to do things in specific situations. I felt like some of the things were similar to our, the microaggression trainings that have been happening. But it also is, as if you have taken the training, you get your badge, I have one of my badges here tonight. And the badge that can go on the lanyard also is a way to identify people who would be receptive. We used to have, I guess, a program that would identify safe rooms. And so the idea is that room may be occupied by different people at different times. So knowing who you, a student might be able to approach is a different way of doing it. So no matter what room that person's in, they could be approached. So it was a wonderful training. If you're looking for things to add on to our retreat, it might be a great thing for us to do. It wasn't very long. It was full of really great information. And then I guess as a follow-up, you know, the June is Pride Month and I would be, I started thinking about like, what can we do publicly to send this type of message to our students? Because Julie spoke so much about how just being able to see something like this just, you know, makes students feel supported, even if they don't need to use that person as a resource. And so I started thinking about what else can we do to send that same kind of message with Pride Month coming up? And I thought there might be some plans and if that's something that we could hear about, that would be great.
Okay, great. Thanks. Any other updates or questions? Terry?
It's my weekly Emerald House update that we've gotten money from the state. And it was interesting when the Wapahnoa presentation was, how do you learn this history? One of it is from having people who lived through it give presentations and talks. So they're going, we're going to be doing some recording. We put together questions they like to, you know, have the answer and everything. And so each week it just gets more and more interesting. And I'm so glad I got to be the leading person. I kind of muscled my way into it, but I'm not going to apologize.
I appreciate it. I got to tell you, Miguel, I was talking to him last week, gave you all kind of credit for being on the committee and just your, your ideas that you're contributing. So anyway, he was, he was giving you compliments. And I did ask Miguel if we could, if he would join us at school committee, since we talk about the project so much, if he would join us. So he's off to Portugal soon, so we might have to get him on, but he would be happy to be here. He just thinks it's so early in the development of everything, but I did tell him that you, that you mentioned the committee and how much you're enjoying it every week. So. So that's fun.
The only thing that I had was to just reminder to send me dates if you know you're going to be out of town at some point in the summer, so we can plan our meetings and retreat around that. And now, having seen the show of hands of people who are so interested in the, I already, professional learning community?
Community.
With the tribe, if you can, you know, think about your time commitment, ponder it a bit, and then if you're still interested, shoot me an email and we'll figure out who's going to do that. And maybe it'll be something that we start with a certain group and then the next phase is a different set of people. So that everybody has a chance to get involved. But that's all I had. Any last things? Yes?
It is also Nurses Day this week and I think that we should acknowledge the amazing nurses for Falmouth Public Schools as well as the town public nurse that's done a great job in facilitating vaccines and navigating the contact tracing and quarantining and close contact and when to stay home and nervous parents and scared families and everything that goes with it. I just, I really, really want to acknowledge that special group of individuals, especially this year.
Thanks.
And I think every single one of you are amazing.
Absolutely. Great. Okay, with nothing else, I make a motion that we move into executive session with respect to collective bargaining with FBA units A and B, step three grievance, numbers eight and nine, and to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, the Department of Labor Relations. Having these discussions in open session may have a detrimental effect on the school committee's position. It's anticipated that the school committee will not return to open session. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Melissa. And it's a roll call vote. John?
Andrea, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea and Carl, yes.
Terry? Terry Meders, yes.
Natalie? Natalie Calhoun, yes.
Melissa? Melissa Keef, yes.
Lisa? Lisa Hart, yes.
Leah? Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill?
Ryder, yes.
Kelly Welch also, yes, so that's unanimous. So we will move into executive session. Thanks to everybody who joined us tonight.